Good God.
Excellent. Thanks.
We got enough to connect here.
I'm, oh, I changed it.
Talk to both of you. You can hear it from the city, they're out.
No, I did not.
It's ending up, we'll call the meeting on the round to kind of commission orders, please. Joining, uh, we say again, the budget allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to August. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
Who's the who?
We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as submitted. All of your favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The whole same time. And that's our group, thank you. Uh, group of bills.
Will there's an additional bill list on your desk as well?
Make a motion over here, any bills. Okay.
On the higher list, there's a bunch of.
Have motions later, too.
We have a motion in a second to approve the bills as submitted. One call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Lighton.
Aye.
Ritt.
Aye. Smoke's killing me. Financial report.
Everything looked like it was pretty long order. Really close.
Are you good, Kenny?
Got treasure checks.
Oh, we're on the financial.
Oh, I skipped, sorry.
No, no.
No, we're good, we just, we have to transfer money once again. LAC. Whether things even heal.
Just for the light.
What do you approve? We have a motion in a second to approve the financials. You will call.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Lighton.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Ritt.
Aye. Treasures checks. We just have one of that.
Yep.
Was that worth it?
Hello. Oh, this is funny.
There's nothing, is that?
Check on that.
What do you approve? Second. Motion in a second to approve the treasures check.
The body.
Now, harder than normal. Just a box. Do you want to approve that before we get clarification or do you want to wait? Wait, wait. Now, we'll wait on that treasures checks until we get a clarification. Any additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, do you feel it wise that we add a discussion on future of the LAC to the agenda?
We can set up a meeting or set up a conversation and add that to the agenda, sure.
Then I'd like to do that under the business and I'm going to approve the agenda as amended.
Um, treasures checks, this was a sale of a house.
Oh.
So we have to do it in and out.
Okay.
Very much.
Hi, everybody.
We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended. All of your favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The whole same time. Motion to approve the agenda is approved. Uh, back to the treasures check. Uh, motion to accept that, correct?
Yeah.
Who is the motionist?
Motion in a second. Um, roll call, please.
Holt.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Lighton.
Aye.
Ritt.
Aye. Extension Service, Sarah, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. So we just wanted to give a little update, you should have received our quarterly report.
It's here.
So, yes, so that will kind of, uh, explain everything in detail, but, uh, just a little snippet of what we've been up to. It's been a very, very busy summer for us. Uh, things are kind of slowing down finally, Cindy's taking a much-needed vacation, so we're holding down the fort without her. Um, we had a very good mini camp series with our four H, it's been a good four H summer. A lot of opportunities for our kids, young and old. Um, you know, we had some drawing and painting, we had a really fun career exploration, um, camp for our older, uh, older four Hers, more on leadership. That was with, uh, the Lake Ridge State College, and that was a very good partnership, I think we'll definitely do that again in the future. Um, we had, um, a clover bike camp for our younger four Hers, sewing camp, a couple of cooking classes for our younger, uh, four Hers, and another one for our teen four Hers. Wake Horse Guild did an outdoor camp with us, which was great. Uh, we did some water sampling and kayaking and, uh, that was a good opportunity for the, for the kids. And then our final camp is coming up on August 13th, and that's a barbecue boot camp with Darren Wilcox. So he's going to teach the kids how to, uh, barbecue, uh, we'll add in some food safety, uh, and I wrap it up with some, with a good meal for the kids. Fair season is officially over, so, uh, our team of days, we wrapped up, uh, in July 16th and 17th. Um, we had a good showing, we had over 400 projects, a little lower than, than average, but we, we blame COVID for that, but still a, a good showing of projects. Livestock and horse entries were, were very nice, it was good to see some, uh, large, uh, especially our large animals and full rings. Um, so, uh, yeah, the fair, we sent over 200 projects to the fair, they returned yesterday, so all the projects are in the kitchen right now, and we're, we're going to be separating those today. We have some kids that participate in, uh, the Communication Arts Program at the state fair, which is really great, they did very well. Uh, we had four presentations there and, uh, I think three out of the four received second place. It's great, we had four participants in the clothing review project expo, it was kind of like a little science fair, uh, opportunity for the kids. We had four, uh, participants in that, 33 livestock entries at the fair and 81 horse entries at the fair as well. So, um, great showing for Ramsey County, uh, and they all did a great job. And I think a, a couple of our, our horse entries received very high honors as well. So, um, all of that information is on our Facebook page. And then also kind of the farming world, um, Extension and NESU have come up with a lot of great resources on drought. So, um, anyone can check out all of those resources, they're completely free. And, uh, on, on that website, they also have some relief programs that farmers can check out as well. And in, in the other realm, the kind of the human, uh, and stress realm, uh, there are a lot of great videos for families to check out, uh, kind of how to cope with stress and, um, I kind of science to watch for family lives. So I really highly recommend those videos as well. Um, so check out the NESU Extension website for any of those resources. So, yeah, that's what, that's what we've been up to. Hey guys, anybody have any questions?
Great. Chupin's great, Dave was fantastic, the exhibits at the state fair were wonderful.
Yeah.
Um, very good participation, very good showing from him, he's going, great job.
Proud of the, proud of the kids.
Proud of their kids, yes, for sure.
Parents.
Yeah. And it's Mr. Brown's, uh, grant did it very well.
Yeah, it was very, every day it was, it was very busy up there.
Yeah.
Big crowd.
Yeah.
All the time.
I think they were ready to get that, they missed that.
They weren't. The fair was upset, I mean, that was.
Really?
Like I ran the mine up there, it was $310.
That's surprising, it was, they also, it was just very busy.
Yeah, it was. And they're excited all the time.
And Neil, can we just update it as far as the search for replacement for Mr. Horse?
Yes, we will, we've updated, updated that, um, the ad, I mean, it should go out, I think, I think it's in mid-August.
Okay.
Is the. I think it'll go out a little sooner, but that's just kind of how, um, how it's going with the NESU side right now.
Right.
But we're hoping by October, mid-October, we should have somebody.
Well, that'd be fantastic, great, so, thank you very much, any other questions or stuff?
Thank you.
Go do something.
Thank you, sir. Rhonda.
Good morning.
Ultimate Human Service, proud kids, we're up.
Thank you, Bradley.
Yeah, thank you, excuse me.
I think that you have the copies of the index for all of the counties and you also have our final, uh, 2022 budget that was authorized by our board, I think, the 21st of July, the 3rd Monday of July. Um, I wanted to add that Benson County is the only county in our zone to add from their general fund to our, to our budget. Um, they are, they graciously agreed to provide $55,000 for furniture for the Fort Cotton office, so that would, those would be direct from their general fund, and they approved that at their first meeting in July. So much needed furniture for our Fort Cotton, um, office for Benson County Social Services, we deserve so. Um, I also wanted to mention that you, um, Candy received a countywide cost allocation plan, as have the other counties. They're going to do some much-needed training on that next, well, coming up, I'm not sure when it is. Um, I think that it's, um, becoming more important, especially for social services, not wanting, uh, in commissions, not wanting to dip into general county funds by making sure that all of the costs are captured in that countywide cost allocation to at least get the 25% back, um, of what they report under that plan. So, um, Diane from Abacus has been, um, great, so. With that, I don't know if anyone has any questions. Oh, I would also like to add that, um, say the quote used 2018 countywide cost allocation, so just so you know, we are still operating on 2018 costs for 2022 budget, which is, we're going to do our best to make it work, but.
Questions on, on like social service, on human service?
How is, uh, integration of all of the different county, um, social service units gone? I mean, do you feel like you're at 100% right now as far as what, what you think it could look like as a district? Or are we still working towards that?
We're still working toward that, I think that, um, some of our biggest challenges are, as I mentioned, so thank you for asking. Um, we're still working towards that, it's been, it's been difficult. Um, I found out last week that CAS, Grand Forks, and Ward will be without zone director, or excuse you, CAS, uh, Burley and Ward will be without zone directors, and they've had a difficult time recruiting. Um, so, um, the CAS director is done the 11th. Um, it's been a goal, there have been hiccups, um, I think overall services are better for citizens, and that's the goal. It's been difficult for staff. Um, anytime you have huge changes in leadership or changes in operations, you have, um, people that just say, yep, I'm out. And so we've had some staff, staff turnover. Um, having said that, the two biggest challenges, I think, for our zone specifically for coming 2022 will be staff, uh, being adequately staffed with staff that are, um, have the, the correct fit for the job, the eligibility portion of our, um, probably 40, 50, 40, 38 people are eligibility workers. Very difficult job. Um, some have been working at home, others have not, when you serve a population that has poverty, um, they do not take to putting things in drop boxes, they, they come in, we kind of learned that through the pandemic, so we're still seeing quite a few people face-to-face and have been throughout the pandemic, we were staffed. Some people did work at home. The next big challenge will be, um, services for children. We've been really, as Adam and Ed know, I, um, have talked about this a lot, that there aren't services for those very, very, um, challenged children that need specialized care in the state of North Dakota. And we've just been really strapped to find, um, all the way from a 15-year-old to a, a six, just turned seven-year-old, just not being able to find placement, um, for those children, and it's very sad. And so I think those are, that's a challenge for the state, but specifically, we don't have any child placing agencies, obviously, in our four-county zone, and, um, our services are limited. Um, I don't think the, the village, and I probably won't speak, but I don't think the village has been able to hire a therapist in our four-county, in Ramsey County specifically for four years. So that's very concerning, and they, I, I don't even know what their plan is, because I get the same answer every time I ask. So I think, kind of my email is, how are we doing on this, and it's, we're still trying to recruit, so.
Rhonda, does that therapist have to live in the community then?
No.
They don't have to live?
No.
They can live in Grand Forks if they wanted?
Right, it would be a lot of driving, because in-home, we typically want folks to be responsive to evenings, um, meeting families where they're at in the evenings, because typically both parents work. So that's been a, a huge challenge to draw professionals to our area to, to do. So I think our biggest challenges will be, um, employee, recruiting employees to staff, adequately staff our, um, our zone, and recruiting professionals with, um, master's degrees and up to serve children, psychologists, uh, masters of social workers that will do therapy, um, that type of thing, so.
The directors that are, they're not there in these larger counties, is there a reason they have left or just retired? Or what's your thought?
Um, I know that, um, the Ward County Director is retiring, she's given the date of November. Um, there was some issues in CAS County, um, I know that their director resigned sometime ago, they did hire, they had a new person in place for a year, and she's now resigned and done August 11th. Um, Burley County has had, um, their, their director was terminated, and they had an interim for going on two years, and I think they're now just going to start the hiring process. So, um, again, a lot of changes with, um, that it just ha, I mean, it happens, I'm, I, I don't know the ins and outs besides what was in the newspaper, but, yeah, that's typical of changes, and we've experienced that in our zone, too, with people just saying, oh, we're going into a redesign for eligibility work. And, um, these management styles, eligibility workers have their own, you know, these are my 200 cases, these are my 150 cases. And, um, the change to process management was made about three years ago for our county, and then getting Rolet looked in and Benson looked in has been a goal, and we've had people across the state with the idea that the state is going to process management, and now, uh, long-term eligibility workers are saying, oh. Um, change is very, very difficult, and we all know that, because we experience it every day, but for some people, it's a game changer as far as their career and their time, so.
I just think it's very unusual, you know, for the largest counties, you'll have directors, and the state just kind of lets it slide, like you said, almost two years out, and one of the gas county, maybe they had trouble down there, but, uh, the stability of the state kind of, you know, makes me a little nervous.
Yeah, um, I think that there have been, um, searches for Burley County, and when you read the newspaper, do a search on Burley County, I think that people are reluctant to, I, you know, I don't know what kind of candidates or if they are candidates, but I'm guessing that's why they keep opening it, I have no, you know, I don't have the inside information, and that's just only my totally purely a guess, that they Google CAS or they Google Burley and they go, no. So.
Or are, are wages high enough for them to take a job like this, or does that not attract people in the?
I, I think it's for.
They set in a wage, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And I think that's part of it, too, we've talked about it, our, our zone board meetings, recruitment and retention has been a problem across the state, because we have salary compression, we have, we don't have the flexibility on a statewide system like we do in the county, where we can say we want to pull 3% up or whatever to try to recruit, retain, and, and it's, it's just gets, it's difficult.
Yeah.
It sounds like it's the best hours in the world.
It's not an easy job.
No, no, that's what the listeners here at O'Shaughnessy had to hear that, but, you know, we understand how the wages are deviating, you know, it's kind of set scale and, and the whole deviation from that.
Right, um, thank you for bringing that up, compression is a huge issue, and today at 9:15, the, um, interim Human Service Committee is meeting on compression in salary, and I hope to listen in a little bit on my way to Candy, but, um, that is a huge issue. Um, we have tapped out our child welfare unit, I'm concerned, we did have one resignation, and she cited, I, I just, this is not the job for me, the nights, um. Um, I used to thrive on that, I'll be honest, I was the, you know, stay up all night and work all night and have the, but after a while, that's very weary. I've had a couple all-nighters this summer, based on what's going on with staff, just being on the phone, being supportive, and they're out there doing it, so I don't want to whine that this is not about me, but it's, it's tough work. Um, again, and I, it's work that no one sees as doing it right, there's always a, um, somebody that has a Monday morning idea of how it could have been done better. Um, but they weren't there at the time, they were wrangling children at 4:00 AM off of Overpass in Grand Forks, perhaps. So, um, that, that's, um, that's the reality of the job, it's very difficult work. Um, very rewarding work, and we have, I, I can't say enough about our child welfare unit. They've had a lot of changes, too, we're switching to a safety framework model, which is very evidence-based. Again, schools, um, are, are going to struggle with this a little bit, because we're looking at imminent risk and safety, and a lot of times, a general idea, not always, and I don't want to diss schools, but an idea of the public looking in is a child would be better in foster care, and that's not the case. And, and it's difficult when you see children struggling, that, not to jump to that answer, and I think we're the person that says no. Um, there's some changes in the juvenile court act that have not been changes since the 1970s, and huge changes coming with children in need of services, chins and chips, children in need of protective services, which will be shuffled to the zones, and hopefully, within this next year, we're going to get, um, services to, to provide for those kids. I'm a little worried, um, just because of the difficulty in attracting staff, so I've talked too much. But, yeah, it's, it's an exciting time, very, um, good thing, lots of good things have happened, I don't need to focus on the negative. I think people, I think that citizens are being served better, there's better supervision and better checks and balances as far as across the zone for making sure that people get services that they need, um, and that, um, families being served in the child welfare area are being served as, as well as they can, as good as they can. We have heard of some off-site supervisors, supervisors are hard to come by, as I mentioned, with, um, the, the inability to attract professional staff, so we've, if there's been a positive side to the pandemic, it's opened up the teams with one-on-one supervision with someone in, perhaps Cavalier County, Susan Tashproppi is doing a great job, um, supervising the program, uh, programmatical part of Child Protective Services, that'd be Jose Sanchez and Madison Ruckey. So, I mean, there have been really good things, but it, it changes very difficult, and we're not, we're, to answer the, a long way to get there, we're not quite where we want to be, but we're getting there.
Well, that's good, you know, we're all so fortunate to have you, hearing these stories about these different, uh, areas where people have abandoned ship, you know, it just highlights how diligent you've been not to. So thank you for your adaptability and flexibility.
Well, uh, it might be stubbornness, I'm not sure.
The world, the world needs some of that, too.
Yeah, and, and my great aunt told me once, it's my greatest quote ever, that, I told her she's really brave, traveling with her six foot six husband, holding him up, coming off the train, and she said, you know what they say? And I'm like, no, because he always didn't really want to ask her what they say, that bravery and stupidity are, uh, and tenacity are cousins, so, there you go.
Very good.
And again, thank you very much, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions on budget for the Human Service Center?
Dude, I gotta ask you this question, uh, Commissioner, what I mean, are legislators asking the directors in the state how they're putting their voting, I, you know, there need to be changes, I mean, this is what, second term, this is the end now, so. So I, I'm curious, you know, if those legislators are, that are on the committee, Human Services Committee, are they getting the word out there, are they getting to understand how things are going?
I, I feel very supportive of the legislature, there, the changes are hard in a long-term sys, system that probably hasn't been as responsive, I can't say enough about Representative Westlin, he very much keeps on top of what's going on. Um, Senator LP has had many conversations with me, um, Senator Hogan and Senator, and, oh, she will not like this, um, Senator, um, from Fargo, who's the head of the Senate Human Service Committee, her name is?
Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, thank you, has been, um, amazing as far as keeping her pulse on that, um. And other senators, uh, Senator Wise from the Hertzfield area, he is very much on top of this, he's the, uh, House, uh, leader for the Human Service Committee. So it's just, I think, the largest system ever, um, it, it takes a long time to make changes, and then for those changes to take hold. For, as far as child placing, there's a whole, many, many systems that come into play to get us where we're at, where we don't have places for children, um, which is too long to get into, but, um, I think we're working on it. I know that Judge Fowey has asked to have a meeting with, um, DHS on Friday, and I haven't talked to, um, our co-chairman of our Human Service Center yet, but I was going to ask him to dip into the Zoom meeting to just to hear what, what, um, the judge has to say, he's been, he's been frustrated, asked about other judges across the state with the lack of placing. Um, having said all that, you know, we're also going to be as one, Department of Human Services and Department of Health, which I see also as a good thing, because I think that Department of Health, and looking at social determinants of health, and how they play into families, maternal, uh, maternal health, um, zero-to-three visiting these moms, we shouldn't get a six or seven-year-old that we can't place anywhere. And I think that if we would partner better with our partners in health, the home visitors, they're just, Department of Health is seen as helpful, obviously, our ends and, um, social workers that work for Department of Health going in from zero to three, so we don't have the six to seven, who turns seven while he's in our care, that is not placed anywhere. So I'm excited about that, but again, I've heard people in both Department of Health and Social Services said, oh, this is going to be a, you know, I'm not going, again, the change is very difficult when you look at taking two very large organizations and putting them together, but, I, like I said, bravery, stupidity, and, um, tenacity, I'm pretty excited about that partnership with the Department of Health, with, um, especially the home visitation part, and with elderly, the home visitation, the van, the, the bus going out to the elderly person's house, to the house with that baby that's on, uh, um, oxygen and whatever, I think, it'll be good, it'll, we just need to get there.
Yeah, just, uh, I think it's been really beneficial to have Representative Westlin on our board, because he sees the inner working. Yeah, just, uh, I think it's been really beneficial to have Representative Westlin on our board because he sees the inner workings of it at every meeting. About what the zone and the director and the staff have to deal with and talking about things like the compression issue and retention and trying to find people. And, and he can relay that message up the, up the, uh, the ladder and I, I think that's gonna help us. But it's just, like I said, it's just a constant, there's always something to work on. And that's everything in life, I guess, but overall it's, I think it's been one multi.
It, it has, and we have four positions open now. So if you know anyone, um, three of them do not require a college, college, they, college degree. They require experience with working with people and, um, determinations banking experience perhaps. So we're excited to get those filled. It's been, it's been a goal, so.
Or is there any other legislators on the local boards?
I think there are in certain places.
I, I was wondering the same thing. You know, I think that would be a good thing to have representation from legislators on the zone boards.
I need to be commanded to be on the board and taking the time to be there.
Yeah, we were, Representative Weston stepped up.
Very, very fortunate, very, very.
Yeah.
Right, I, I do know there are some other zones where there are legislators, but I don't think there's many.
Dr. Knowledge, right, the committee that sent all this up, you know, he's got a voice there, you know, so.
I think, yeah, there is an email, Adam, with what, just like we started on, that the zone boards across the state, there are a handful.
Yeah, and it might be worth noting as well, like we did talk about at our last meeting, that they made a change in the law that were in the last session. Where two commissioners can no longer sit on the zone board anymore. So we'll have to make a change, uh, coming next January. So maybe it would be worthwhile, you know, maybe try to twist Senator Elke's arm or something like that, because we can get somebody else on there that would have a little bit of. Uh, to get over there or, or Representative Johnson, just so that they, you know, they could take that more information back would be beneficial probably. Something to think about, at least we got some time to work on.
Well, I think one of those two will step up eventually.
Yeah, I could, it's just a matter of asking.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, yes, thank you.
Would be a motion to approve that budget separately? Or can we do this as a part of the whole budget?
Do the whole budget.
Just curious.
Put the whole budget in there?
Um.
Since it's not a separate hearing?
Cover our bases.
Yeah, let's, let's just.
I mean, because it's, it's not our money territory, but we still have to approve it. That's what we're, you know, as part of the month. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the monthly human service district budget for twenty twenty-two.
We have a motion in a second to approve the monthly human service district, uh, twenty twenty-two budget. Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same time. Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Brian, Mr. Sam, I hear there was mostly employee handbook changes.
And I'm gonna guess you have a lot in front of you, this is very hard, I think this is gonna have about some group exchanges. Small addition about the debt structure. It gets me input from, uh, some, some of the supervisors. Kevin was one of them.
Yeah, I'm still confused. I'll work with the others there. Basically it's, uh, vacation benefits, um, starting, it was a little confusing with when they, uh, reached their. Going from eight hours per month, occurred J twelve hours, is that the big issue?
That's what I was confused about. I mean, I, it basically starts month sixty-one is what that employee handbook from eight, uh, twelve.
So before we weren't sure if it was at the beginning of year five or after year five essentially.
Yeah, the verb is a little confusing. Some people saw it that way, some it is perception. So there's another one, oh, sixty-one?
Yes. Yeah, just first they worked through the completion of year five sixty-one. So it doesn't make any changes, it's just clarification, basically. The other ones are just, the other one, we, did we approve the other two previously? I couldn't remember. And that's just, just talking about the staff structure and making sure that the work we just classified.
Yeah, and that's more for, uh, for overtime situation.
Well, there's clarity here.
Any other questions for Brian? We'll avoid adding, uh, approvals.
I, I like the changes, look for, so I made a motion to approve the changes.
We have a motion in a second to approve the changes in the employee handbook as recommended by ECR Director Brian Sam. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, thank you.
Kevin, you are up.
All right. Uh, first of all, the projects we're working on currently, our bridge removals, we do have all the bridges removed out. But we've got three culverts to put in on Tomacacalli roads. We'll finish that up before we take the excavator back. Um, I don't know if you've heard anything from the public, but like I said, we tore those two bridges out, up in the South Edmar area and just left them out. There are two bridges that have been closed for the last three to five years anyway. So I don't know if you'll hear anything about them.
They're down in the middle of nowhere.
What's that?
They're in the middle of nowhere.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We had to drive through crop to get to one of them.
Local farmers haven't been using them because they don't trust driving over.
Uh, they had to sign them up and everything.
Okay, and I wouldn't suppose that everybody would.
Could walk across a lot of them. Um, striping has been done on the Tripsiel Road that we did this summer and also they repainted the Prairie Road and Woodruff Road. Ramsey Two is scheduled to be repainted, but that just got painted last year, so we didn't repaint that again. So the striping is done now.
So that was done on, was Redd Road, on the Chipsealing and what other road?
Prairie.
Or the Prairie Road?
It's kind of a three-year rotation on the rest of it.
The strip road base of the Woodruff Road.
Any questions on the projects we're working on? Okay, a bunch of motions, uh, we got the bill from subsurface for putting the grout in that culvert. Uh, in Ramsey County Three, and that bill was twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty cents. And that was the remainder of the original bid from twenty nineteen, so they did raise their cost, I am.
A motion.
Move it through.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to pay the, uh, remaining bill from subsurface incorporated from the forehead for cord on Ramsey Three, roll call please.
Bulk?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Uh, we got the cutting edges from lower graders from Butler now, so and that invoice was nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Are these cutting edges for the year or that's just for the portion?
Yeah, these will last into next year. I mean, I have that much left in my budget, so I haven't spent it. And, but now these are, these will last all the summer and going into next.
Thank you. How many, how many sets do we usually go through a summer?
This will be, you know, I've asked this before, we've already ordered twenty-five sets for six machines. This will be the second twenty-five sets and we won't use all these this year.
I imagine you've been going through more this year to dry.
Yeah, typically, it's dry.
A little faster. Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion in a second, give the invoice from Butler for the cutting edges, roll call please.
Brown?
Aye.
Bulk?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have the invoice for two dollars steel for the culverts for replacing the bridges. And that was ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifteen cents. Motion paid out. Thirty-six footers? Thirty-six footers?
Thirty-six footers?
Uh, yes, they were seven, yep, and fifty feet long here. But there's a bunch, there's like, uh, three of those, there was, um, six footers, so there'd be four more, so that's ten. So that's about ten culverts.
For a big deal?
Yeah. Steel prices.
We wanted to do it for thirty years.
Last thirty years? Oh, yeah, easy, especially the ones we put on the county lines, they're plastic, polyline, polycoated, so they'll last fifty years, hopefully.
So they're all rusty inside out, right?
Yeah, generally, and especially if there's water sitting in the cooling.
They're all lying.
Uh, the ones on the county lines are, the one we put by, uh, Joneses, the Joneses, those weren't fire. It's kind of a hurry up deal and the ones we could get weren't lying.
I'll move through these.
Second.
Motion in a second to give the invoice for tree north steel for the culverts to replace, uh, the bridges that are being done. Roll call please.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Bulk?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I need orders and culverts for our stock, eighteen and twenty-four inch, thirty-six inch that type. Their cost, fifty thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and fourteen cents.
Move it through.
Second. Motion in a second to order culverts for stock, fifty thousand, three eighty-five, fourteen. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion carries.
And last year when we, when we gravelled the Hudson County lines off of Church's Ferry, that one, first half mile south of US Two was underwater. So we didn't hit it groundwin. And Red Coast called me and asked if we still wanted it done. And that half mile was gonna cost thirty-five hundred dollars to finish it and I think it'd be worthwhile to do, so motion to go ahead with that.
Move it through. Motion and do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Motion in a second to, uh, Mr. Coast to do that half mile of the Indian roads off of Church's Ferry, thirty-five hundred dollars. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion carries.
And also about the first month of rental bill from Ironhide for the excavator and packer that were done. And that invoice was for six thousand, eight ninety-six and sixty cents.
Move it through. Second.
Motion in a second to give the invoice for Ironhide for equipment rental, roll call please.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Bulk?
Aye.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So I have three more items, uh, yesterday we got the bill from the DOT for the bridge inspections that were done last year, last fall. And they probably did, uh, twenty, twenty-four, roughly, and our share, our nineteen percent share of the bill is fifteen thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Move it through. Done.
Motion in a second to approve the DOT bridge inspections, fifteen dollars and six thirteen fifty-nine, uh, roll call please.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Bulk?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Now, along with that DOT bill, we have to sign a form that says that we're using non-federal money to pay our match. So I need a motion for the chairman and the auditor to sign that certification of local match form too.
Second.
The move in second is that we have chairman and auditor sign, the state government, they're using federal funds, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion carries.
Okay, the last one I have is, uh, we got the invoice for the road oil that we put into our overhead tank yesterday. Uh, from Husky Marketing, a supplier company, and that total was seventeen thousand, three hundred and eighty, yeah, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents.
Big deal.
Seventeen, three eighty-eight, eighty-four?
Correct.
And what's that for?
Uh, the road oil for our oil tank.
Gotcha, road oil. Roll call please.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Bulk?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Motion carries. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Oh, one thing I forgot, we just got this email last night from Terry Trainer. I'll just read it. It says, Senate Majority Leader Schuler is expected to see the final Senate vote for a gun free and buy arts and physical infrastructure bill. One week is over. Have you guys seen this?
Yeah.
I just gave it to, I emailed it and then I gave it to him.
Yes, I will bring that up.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah.
Anything else, Kevin? Anybody have anything else for Kevin? Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Moving on to new business. Uh, approval of the twenty twenty-two preliminary budget that aired out for Tuesday, September twenty-first at six PM.
Where, where do we put the, uh, add an agenda item? Can we retire about that?
We should move that ahead now.
Yeah, I think that would be beneficial, probably, I think it's the same thing.
So we added an agenda item to discuss the LEC and we're gonna go from here kind of thing. Um, it was brought to my attention that the city decided to take out seventy-five and change from the budget that was proposed from the LEC. Um, and Rob, thank you for coming in this morning. And it, it puts us in a very precarious situation. And it's not the first time that this has happened with the city. In fact, I think this is the third year in a row. Uh, that, and we've gone through a budget process through the LEC board for three, four months leading up to what brings us to our preliminary approval. And at the last minute, the city continues to take away from that budget that's discussed and proposed and approved by the LEC budget itself or the LEC board. Frustrating. Um, I think it's extremely unfair to the political institutions that, that helped occupy and funded that facility. Um, I think it's unfair to the LEC administration. And, uh, we'll open it up for discussion on how we want to proceed.
And start with a question? What was the rationale?
So in my conversations with Commissioner Henry and Commissioner Robbins was that they have agreed to pay their whole portion of the cost share hormone in the LEC. Uh, they are under budgeting their incarcerations by fifty thousand dollars and then they're gonna continue to pay budget at the old rent rate. So they still haven't paid the new rent rate down to effect in January this year. So they still haven't paid the new rent rate down to effect in January this year. Uh, and that's how the, their, their incarcerations are trending numbers, uh, but they didn't budget for them all. Because we're going off a three-year average. Uh, so they're, they're kinda banking on that.
So we were anticipating a new rent rate next year, or we had a new rent rate this year?
Yeah, we have a new rent rate for at the beginning of this year.
And they haven't paid that new rent rate?
No, they continue to pay the old rent rate.
You're sure what the reasoning behind that, not paying a new rent rate?
Um.
Still agree with us?
Yeah, well, there's arguments that they will be building, some need to pay rent, and there are a couple different arguments that they have.
So, did anybody, you know, come up with the point where if we under-budget and basically screw everybody else, who makes up the difference? Because that's essentially, that's the question at the end.
Right, well, and it starts to set that precedent for.
I mean, what happens if we decide that we think we're under-running and we, we take a quarter million dollars out of our budget that at the end of the year nobody's got any cash? I mean, it's just, uh, for sure.
We're starting, right? I just, yeah, you know, the courthouse in Texas, the things I've been on, done in this courthouse since we were on, I've been on this. Fixing the roof, actually, those upkeep, upkeep of the building. You know, if you're not charging rent, only helping you keep the building up. And it's gotta be a substantial amount. They do the upkeep. I'm preaching to the choir, you don't know that, but I know there are dates, so. But I, I doubt it.
I, I understand.
I think you all know where I'm at.
Yeah, I, I understand their argument to a point on the rent thing, but not really, I don't, I don't agree with their argument simply because, yes, we own the building, but essentially the building is run by the law enforcement center. It, it's run by that board, and if Toner County wanted to house their share, if they're, I mean, obviously it wouldn't do that benefitous thing. If you wanted to, we would require them to pay rent because they don't own the building. So, since we're physically utilizing the space that could be physically utilized by another entity, whether it's us or somebody else, we would require that outside entity to pay rent, so we should pay rent as well, because we're physically utilizing the structure.
Well, and it's like downtown, the, the building that, uh, Rain Realty is, right? That is owned by the walls who own Rain Realty and myself. And Rain Realty pays rent. But, but the point that's made is, hey, look, you're paying half of this rent to yourself.
Exactly.
But it's not fair, but, but it's not fair to me, as your business partner, to have one side of the building producing no rent at all.
Right?
So it's like you get half price rent. And the exact same thing is true with the city and the county, which is, it is not fair to the county that the city gets by paying less rent. And it doesn't make any sense to me that they're arguing that they shouldn't have to pay any rent at all. You know, because it's, 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 there's an opportunity cost that is lost for other things that couldn't, that's basically used for. Right? Apart from housing, the, the police department.
Well, like you said, the, it's the easiest way to offset the fact that we're paying, you're just paying yourself back, but it's, it's offsetting the fact that the other three entities in the agreement are not using the physical structure.
Right.
It's just that simple. I, I, I understand why they're, they're frustrated, but at the same point, I don't, I don't agree with the argument.
I guess I don't understand why they're frustrated. I don't see what their endgame is, I don't know what it exactly is that they want, other than to continuously flout all of the agreements that they've made, hoping that everybody else will say, oh, well, okay, I guess we'll, we'll take this one in the cheap game, too.
You know, I guess what, what's the point of the budgeting process if, if the rest of us agree to the budget and then one of the entities continues to underfund the budget? Why do we even go through the process?
And the frustrating part about waiting till the eleventh hour
Yeah.
to make those changes and adjustments, um, I think is inexcusable. You, you know, it really is, you know, they, they've done this the last three years, um, you know, we've had that budgeting process beginning at, at March at the L E C board level, um, which has two city representatives there, um, discussing the budget and going through the numbers with, with, uh, the administration, uh, staff at L E C, and your L E C board members. We bring it back to our individual entities, County City, and Nelson, Benson, Eddie County, all do it themselves. If there is issues and problems, waiting and wait before the preliminary budget is, is set, if to be voted on, um, these other entities really scrambling.
Especially after they were too cowardly to even make the second joint meeting we were having to discuss these issues.
Yes. Well, yeah, I mean, the, the L E C budgets starts, you're, you guys start your budget process far before any other entity, so it's not like there are ample opportunities to bring up the fact that.
Right.
I don't, I, I don't.
And I'd like to thank Rob, you know? I mean, he's very prepared on the budget, you know, very prepared. How much are they shorting us, Rob?
This year it'll be something, right around seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, for this, for twenty-twenty-one, uh, the hundred budget is about a hundred thousand.
A hundred?
Yeah.
Well, the, the thing that, the only way we can make this whole is go back to the willing partners in this deal and request seventy-five thousand dollars from them, is that correct?
It's, it, it gets a little bit more complicated than that because they're basing it off of their incarcerations. You know, the rent aside, I mean, the rent is a different issue, but, but they're basing it off of incarcerations, which are just a projection. Uh, you know, it's, and, and they are trending downwards, uh, because most of their stuff is getting bought to district courts, so it becomes rent collection. Uh, but now, if it's trending downwards to the tune of, say, that'd be, uh, twenty-five percent, no. Like, because that's almost like they're basically undercutting.
But seventy-five, oh, seventy-five thousand is standard, ballpark figure here.
Right, right.
Well, and that's sort of the premise, that they're downtrending, but we would have to be uptrending, which we are slightly, I don't deny that fact. But at the end of the day, if we don't up-trend enough to cover their downtrend, then there's a, there's a, uh, shortfall, and then we all have to make it up. And they have a percentage of it anyway, and then they won't have any money budgeted to make up the shortfall. Which if they have ample general fund dollars to sit there, that's, that's a whole other issue, I guess, to a point, but still. We, I guess, I've been on this commission for, what, six, seven years now, budget cycles, we, we, we never once under-budgeted one thing. You budget it, and then if you come under, fantastic, and it rolls to the general, and then you can offset if you have to, but we don't, we don't under-budget. It's just not, it's, it's just not a good way to do business, it's just not.
Well, and we don't do it to other political subdivisions.
No, it's one thing if we, it's one thing if we say we can, we can take ten thousand dollars out of this budget within the courthouse because we've got ample general fund dollars and we can roll some things around, but when it's a political subdivision that's relying on those dollars that's outside of our entity, we fund it. Because it has to be funded.
And, and the, and the thing is, is these other counties, to a very high degree, rely on us to keep our, basically keep our word, right? They, they have agreed to send their presence, they have agreed to be a part of this, and, and you've got one of the bedfellows who's constantly, you know, trying to, to sneak out the knife, you know, they're not faithful to the cause, is my point. And it's not, it's not acceptable, and it certainly does not paint a good picture to any of these other counties who, who, you know, we mutually rely on to, to support this. Um, I just, I just don't think that there is a way to continue this into the future. I was hoping that the city would come to some kind of an agreement with us through joint meetings about how we can set a standard for practice going forward, so that this doesn't come up year after year after year. But, you know, all that went out the window, and they decided, well, we don't even wanna have that second meeting, and it surprised me at all, they did, they did this now. You know, so it, I think it's probably time that we come to, uh, a solution that, that does not depend on the city in such a way that they can, you know, throw everybody else under the bus. Shouldn't have the power to do that anymore.
I agree with what you said, Lucas, I agree on everything. With the seventy-five short, I mean, we have to put in the preliminary budget today. Or we can't put it in later. I mean, I'm not jumping all the backwards to do this, but we, we don't wanna shorten our public, our political subdivision, law enforcement. We have to do it. There's not a time for change plans here now. And we can't notify the other counties and say, well, you gotta put in ten or twenty or whatever. Right?
Yeah.
I think we're, we're cornered, do we have to put this in, if we want that budget to balance?
Well, I think, I agree.
I think we're gonna have to balance the budget, and the, the other question I would have is, you know, off the preliminary budget, we've been trending up, up, up. We were at a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars this last month, is one point, we're at one point eight, one eight, is that gonna be enough? I mean, we have, we have general fund dollars, too, so we're, we're, we're budgeting off of a projection, which is what we should be doing. But we could always make it up for general fund dollars if we have to. But I just wanna make sure that we have ample coverage as well, because, I mean.
What is comparable with that?
I, I don't know, I'm, that's why I'm asking, I mean, because once you add in the sheriff's department rent and all that, all of those things, your entry center, everything that rolls under is, is, that could be enough. Because we're at one point four this year was our budget, one point four two something. And we were, we should be at fifty-eight point three-three right now, and we're probably at eighty. I mean, we're, we're tracking thirty percent above the one point four cost, so if you add thirty percent on one point four, that's probably one point eight, and it's gonna be tight. So we're already gonna be overfut, overfu, overspending our budget this year, eating into the general fund. Just to offset the fact that we're overspending this year, and I, I don't, I mean, maybe it'll get better, but I don't wanna make that bet, because.
We do have a couple plans, far, because we've noticed that trend with rent collection and, and the seriousness of the levels of the crimes that we're seeing here locally. So, uh, one, there's a couple things we're gonna be doing, uh, one, I'm working to set up a, a meeting with the sheriff and with Bolt, uh, to go over and try to maybe get regular meetings, review the population, identify alternatives that could, people that might be able to offer alternatives such as G P S or, or bomb reductions. Plus, we're also gonna be making a push locally to try and get into the pre-trial services, uh, program that the state has been doing in, in four of the areas, uh, the big four in the state, uh, because that, I think, will really help as far as getting some pre-trial supervision and getting people out of the jail as well.
Well, don't take too many people out, because you're gonna fuck yourself too.
Yeah, it's, one thing, it's happening, we've gotta make a decision today, like we're gonna do today.
The thing of it is, is like you're saying, seventy-five thousand, we're gonna make that decision today. But going on with the city, we need to do this.
We need to address that in another meeting.
Yes, we need to move on.
We need to, oh my, but we wanna do a commission. And it's the best interest of the county.
Right.
And it's getting pretty obvious to me, what's the best interest of the county? You know, and I won't say no, I'm thinking, I think everybody can guess, but I, I got it up there, so. I'm not interested in another sit-down meeting, you know, I think you're not.
Well, the important bit is, is that this is wildly unfair to Ramsey County taxpayers.
Wildly unfair.
I mean, it's, if you're, because you can't even, you can't even look them in the eyes and say, well, you know, the whole process has been open and, and, you know, we've known exactly what we were gonna be dangling into it, because all of a sudden in the eleventh hour, like Jeff said, they, all this extra, all this extra money comes on, and there's no choice but to say, well, I guess, yes, farmers, I hope, I hope you're okay with, well, I can do another mill or two on this, you know? You know, that, that comes in on the, you know, very last minute, and it's just, it's just, it's not fair at all, and I think it's, you know, we are doing a disservice to our taxpayers by letting the city do what I assume they perceive to be a service to theirs.
Yeah. You know? That's exactly correct. On, on top of the fact that I'm, I'm just to the point where, when does somebody that funds twelve percent of the budget get to tell the entity that funds sixty percent of the budget what they're gonna do? It's just that simple. I mean, we're trying to be, we've tried to be a willing partner for years, trying to work and try to go through this and try to make it work, and it's just, every year it's the same thing. And it just gets abundantly frustrating.
We actually, looking at the other side, we had Teller, Teller, you were mentioning Teller, all of a sudden Teller do this to us, we tried to say, well, you have to hit the highway, right? Because we wouldn't be able to keep funding it. Is it any different? You know? I agree with you, but, but you just said, we can't just let someone that's good.
But I think, I think the hardest part is, is that they do have some level of ownership over.
Yeah.
So this is not gonna go as cleanly as telling somebody to, because you're right, we would never let any of those other counties get this far along. Right? We were just sort of how it was, but the problem is, is that, you know, Adam's got the right of it, which is, they've never been carrying the same weight we've been carrying. But they're more than happy to throw one more pound of weight on us whenever they can. And they do it not just with the L E C, but with basically every agreement we have with them.
Yeah. And, and I think that's partially why this is such a difficult discussion, because this is the biggest thing that we're in together. But we fund multiple things together, so we have to, we've always tried to work with each other. But when it's a give and take, you can't continually give and give and give. It's gotta be a back-and-forth conversation, and it just hasn't been that on this or many other entities, which has been exceedingly frustrating.
I mean, the only, the only thing that I can think of that we have never given the city exactly what they asked for is on the recycling center.
Yeah.
Right? That's it, that's the only, other than that, we've more than now been carrying all the way.
We didn't, we didn't fund at ten or something like that, when they wanted ten, we kept it at five or something.
Uh, we did for a couple years, and, and then we took it down.
Yeah, we kept it, we, we kept our five thousand dollars for a couple years.
But that's, that's the only time that I think we've ever sort of, ever held the city to any kind of standard. And it's just unacceptable. Um, well, I guess I'll make the motion that we adjust the budget to reflect the seventy-five thousand dollar shortfall. Um, so that, at least the thing is whole. Uh, and I would add to that motion that, uh, we'll probably get the state's attorney and, and, and ask him to help us draft a very strongly worded letter that lays out some of our views and feelings on this. Because I don't think that we should go quietly into that good night.
No, hell no, not do that. I'll go along with seventy-five thousand, I can go along with your letter, but I can't go quietly into the dark. There's gonna get changed, that's it. This is not the way public identity should get along. It's all for the better of the people. And I know the people in Ramsey County, the city of Delaware Lake want that jail, and they wanna feel safe in our community. And we're gonna do that, for what it costs. I mean, we put over a million dollars into our budget, into the sheriff's department. I mean, we need it, we need it, I mean, we got things going on out of the country, and I don't know. I mean, you hear something every day, you know? People, vehicles getting stolen and driven and, this is the other day, so they had their shop put in there. Everything was taken out of the shop right in the yard. But, wow.
And get some cameras.
It is.
So we have a motion?
I'll make the second.
We have a second? Uh, and motions are together. The seventy-five thousand and the letter, oh, I need the, uh, the issues or?
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll make the second, and then I'll just ask the question. Yeah, I, I think the motion should be together, uh, so I'll second it, as, as Lucas stated in the motion. The, the question I would have is, do we want to have a further discussion on what should go into the letter, or do we want to allow, and Jeff, since you both sit on that board, to sit down with the state's attorney or, or try to figure out what we should, should, I mean, because what, what are we attempting to accomplish in the letter, just say we're angry? Or are we gonna actually do something? That's my question, and I don't know if that's necessarily the discussion I wanna get into here today, because, you know, when we put this on at the last second, more, this is a discussion of the fact we have a shortfall. But.
Put some thought into that letter.
Yeah, I, I think it would, all of us, it would move all of us to have some, have a thought process on what we think should go into it, and then maybe at our next meeting, we have it on the agenda, and we actually kinda parse over.
At the very, very least, the minimum that I want out of that letter is essentially demanding that the city come back to the table. And we actually finish what we were starting there a couple of weeks ago. That's the absolute minimum of good behavior that I feel I'm willing to accept.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
We should probably ask the auditor, if that's all I hear, to put that much more into the budget.
I'll make it work.
How much should we pay for bike maintenance?
Uh, thirteen thousand, seven.
It's about sixty a year.
And about sixty a year. So, I don't know.
That could be, that could be no paid bill.
Well, uh, well, uh, possibly, yeah, it might come to that. Well, the frustrating, and I think, I know we voted, but the frustrating portion of this to me is it's, there, it's one thing if you're, if you're going back and forth on a budget that, all of the budgets that we spend money on are important. But there's ones that are public safety budgets and there's ones where you could hang over ten thousand dollars here and there on what you're spending, cause maybe you think it's a purposeless, but it's the jail. There's no other options. Has to be funded.
All right.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate you coming in and appreciate you and yourself.
Have we, have we, I can ask Rob a question?
Yeah.
Have, have we had any, any luck with finding COs and things, uh, we've increased the wages?
Since we were able to advertise the, the salary increases, which went into effect on Sunday, uh, we've already had three new hires within the jail and we're getting much better applicants.
Awesome.
So, yeah, it's, uh, the, the labor outlook for us is, is really improved.
Good. It's been good.
Yeah.
And it's really giving us.
Something worked.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Thank the commission. Yeah, other than, if something worked, good, then it's really good.
I was hoping that, I mean, we made a pretty good bump, so I was hoping that it would entice some people. So that's awesome.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving back up to the, the twenty-two preliminary budget.
I, I don't believe we ever resolved that motion, did we?
Yeah, we voted.
What do you, I missed it?
No, you voted, you voted, you voted affirmative.
Sorry, I might have been somewhere off clearly.
It was just drawing autopilot. So now we're going back to the budget?
Now we go back to the budget?
So what's, uh, so we put the seventy-five thousand more in?
So I would say just put it at one point nine.
Okay. So we're gonna move it up eighty, eighty-one thousand, change?
One point nine.
Yeah. So basically, we're, we're putting on another one point five mil on top of what we have here budgeted then.
And we broke a record. It's not a great thing, but.
It's, it's not, but I, I would make mention of the fact that if you look at the traditional mil structure of how Ramsey County's operated, a hundred mils is actually really reasonable compared to what we've been at in the past. And a lot of that is the state taking over social services funding and, uh, the, the better apportionment of schools funding is probably just as bigger, bigger than anything. Cause we used to be far more than, as a conglomerated, you know, Ramsey County having to pay all the different entities, we used to be at a far higher taxation level than we are now. Even at a hundred mils. It's, it's pretty good. I'm honest, in all honesty, even if we put in a seventy or about eighty thousand dollars essentially into the LEC budget, with all of the increases we've had to undertake for public safety and stuff, I was pleasantly surprised. We were only looking at a six point five three percent increase on the original budget. I mean, I think that's honestly really pretty good. Considering we're paving next year and doing all those things too, that's, that's pretty reasonable.
Uh, so they, most counties and state are gonna be up to that level of increases?
Yeah, I think so too.
And I think that seventy-five thousand, with the carryover, you know, because no, no one, no one spends exactly down to zero of their budget. So I think we and.
I'm, but we're gonna make no small issue with that.
I think there is.
Cause they did have it.
Yeah.
One, I saw, if I were reading the healthcare thing there too, we're going cow?
Yes.
That's gotta be a first. A two point five three percent reduction in premiums?
In the, in the health portion of it, and then the dental and vision was a five percent, which, which wasn't much, so.
And I, I, I would like to make mention too, like we said at our last meeting, uh, the dental and the vision portion of it has been used because it's good coverage. And we added that on a couple of years ago, which I, I'm glad we did, because beforehand, we had just a handful of employees that took the optional coverage. And now that we have it, they're using it, which is the point of it.
Which is good.
Which is that, yeah, that's good. People are getting better vision and dental coverage. And it was just fantastic. Yeah, so, yeah, sells the job. So that's, that's a good thing. It's, it was worthwhile putting it in the, the budget we did, so. Oh, I guess.
So do we wanna make a motion on that preliminary budget?
Yeah.
Uh, set the, uh, hearing date for September twenty-first at six P M?
So.
Moving seconded, do you approve the preliminary budget?
Of the coin.
And set the hearing date for Tuesday, September twenty-first at six P M. All those in favor, sitting hard by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion to adjourn. Approve, uh, twenty twenty-two renewal of group cross blue shield health and dental vision insurance. And as we mentioned previously in the budget discussion, group cross has really, uh, and, you know, given us a pretty good deal on, pretty good news anyway. We do, it's a good deal, it's up for extension, it looks open chances, um, underwriting of estimate of zero to a five percent increase uh, for the twenty twenty-two year. And the following pages reflect that. Um, uh, pulls a negative five percent.
Um, health is negative two point six.
Two point six.
And the dental and my vision, what?
Five percent.
True.
Make a note, do approve, real.
Okay, so that's. Motion and a second, would have the renewal of, of, of cross blue shield health and dental vision for twenty twenty-two. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, sitting hard by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion to adjourn. Visitors and delegations. Nothing to report. Report on portfolios. Mission life on, what would you?
Well, uh, we're under issue for social services, so I don't have anything to add to that. Um, everything's been going somewhat smoothly. The employee paycheck went well, so that was good. Um, and I think, uh, and we had a meeting for the, uh, I can't get the name right. The conservation resource development district thing that, uh, was put on there. Uh, quite interesting. They're working on local foods initiatives, so that's kinda neat. Um, but they're trying to, uh, work with, uh, directors buying and selling type stuff through like app development, which would be kinda cool. So instead of like, if you wanted to buy, uh, you know, that people put out, uh, some of their areas on Facebook, and then four hundred people say, I want them, and then they're gone, they're gone, they're gone. It'll be like a direct sale thing, where they'll be able to put how much they have, and then it'll just automatically inventory stuff. It's kind of a neat idea. But they're working on development and things like that, so it's, it's kind of a neat board to be on. Um, uh, I think, uh, county housing authority meeting last month, things are going fairly well there. They're getting staffed up, so that's a good thing. I think we're still one short, but we're making progress. Uh, you know, we've had to, same thing there, raise wages to try to attract and, and retain employees, uh, which is not necessarily a bad thing. It's, it's a good market for the employees right now. Um, other than that, I think everything's been fairly quiet.
You haven't had your first library board meeting yet?
Yeah, it is next Tuesday, I believe. We'll, we'll learn. We'll learn more about the library. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
I have nothing from the trailer to offer, recorder office, the link access. We, we canceled a meeting and are moving it to August twenty-fifth. Um, I had several meetings with the Ramsey County Care Board, and it's that one of them. Last night we had a meeting. Um, we're working on coming up with a plan before asking for funding of putting up a multi-curved building. Uh, talked with, uh, Ann O'Leary on it, or he was at one of the meetings, to try to do something so that we can have stuff to do this. So with that, we were kinda thinking that maybe we could do something as such as like they did with the ambulance building, to ask for funding, putting some costs together and proposal of what they would be used for. And present that to you guys with the idea of maybe we could, uh, fund it through, like we did with the ambulance, where we borrowed the money, so on. It's expensive. Um, we decided last night to move on forward, putting this together, um, with some bids that we have gotten. A lot of the bidding companies have thought that they figured thirty to forty percent reduction in, uh, lumber. So pricing will go down because when we put, uh, prices together, it was right from that five to eight hundred thousand dollars, it was something up that could be able to host these events. So just want you guys to know that that's something that we're gonna pursue and bring it to you guys, see what we could do. And with that, they're looking in for grants, so we could add to that, so that it wouldn't all be on the public. We have a couple of different areas where, um, other people have gotten grants up to five hundred thousand dollars. So if we could do something of that nature, get something like that as a grant, we can piggyback off of all, we can actually get something that would be community use. I just want you guys to be aware of that will be coming forward, so that maybe it's something that we can all decide on. It's really, it's a good thing for the community. Other than that, that is all I have at the time.
Would that be for next year?
Yes. Well, not.
Not for this next year.
Not for this.
Funding, funding in the budget next year.
Yeah, yeah, because.
Yeah. Because what we got, what brought us to the attention that this is something, we've only been like three weeks, and it's super hard to put something together. We wanna do it correctly. If we're gonna be spending tax dollar money, we wanna do it correctly. We don't just blow something up and then fall in the sink. We wanna make sure that there's five, six months in that process. We, we put a committee together, um, that Lionel already had started something in the past, so they're gonna piggyback off of that. And I think you have to be a part of that years ago, so. It's not like it's a blind sighted thing, but I just wanna be aware that we're all sitting here, that we don't. I mean, I hope we all feel that this is a need, you know, for the community. It's not like it would just be for an affair, or it would be for the whole community, you know? It would have a lot of different uses.
Could be a good idea, but into the twenty-three budget, I'm thinking, yeah. And lumberyard, lumber prices are coming down.
Yes.
They're flying, it's coming down a half price from what it was.
Right.
And they, Herbert already told me that it's gonna come down more. It's good of a back to it.
I mean, talking to some of the contractors, some of them actually even stopped going through the lumberyard to try to get better prices. They were buying some at loads at a time. You know, and not to undercut the lumberyard. They needed to take more to try to make it right. We wanna keep in bid, and we wanna call it that, you know? Other than that, I call it out.
Thank you. Ed?
Social services, that's on that, and the jail, that's on that quite good, so they're ready, ready. Picking up, like I said, salaries. They're helping, thank you. Supporting us there. And, uh, I get thank yous from the people that are working there all the time. Very beneficial to them, I mean, we all know the cost of more. Adjust the days when we're doing that in our budget and see that. I like Terry Taylor, but her here, that's, that's pretty promising.
Yeah.
Yeah. About when is it gonna be, we could access it anywhere without, like, this.
Right.
Uh, she, you know, get a lot of goods, so. Take care of it.
All right. Mr. Whitefield?
Uh, I haven't had the chance to go and talk to the sheriff, uh, since our last meeting. Um, but he's been in and talked to us, so I think we kinda have a sense for what's going on over there. Uh, Dakota Prairie Community Action Agency had a clean audit. Uh, they normally get audited every year, but it came back totally clean, so that was good. Um, the only other thing that I had, that's kind of more of an announcement, was I happened to be at the city commission meeting last night. Uh, and tribal chair Doug Yankton was in and spoke to, to the city. Um, and one of the things that he mentioned was wanting to have a joint sit-down between the city, Ramsey County, and the, the tribe, uh, to discuss the betterment of all three of our communities and what we can do for that. Uh, and also made mention of the fact that the tribe is looking at investing in and purchasing several businesses and buildings in Delph Lake.
Was that really good, or?
I'm not gonna comment. I don't know. I just, that, all that I'm saying is, is that he brought that up, so just be aware at some point, there may be overtures to the commission. Cause I think, of course, a good thing, it's always good to have dialogue with, um, there may be overtures to the Ramsey County Commission, uh, to look at having a meeting between the tribe and city and the county. That's all I have.
All right. Uh, I don't know a whole lot, Chamber and Airport Authority, uh, you know, your, your board numbers are good, continuing to increase. Um, Chamber, you know, just had their crazy days last weekend uptown, and Rook Fest, I think, was the week before. Um, a lot of, a lot of great activities going on in town and, and, uh, let's see, I was down in Bismarck the day after our last meeting, that interim legislative committee on redesigning state water laws, representing the Association of Townies on there. Uh, it seems to me that there are a lot of miscommunication between water resource boards, county commissions, highway departments, um, as they move through a drain project or a something like that, and where either commissions get and get blindsided, or highway departments get blindsided on a culvert issue or a bridge issue or something that all of a sudden comes up after the budgeting session. And I don't know if you should rightfully change legislation because people aren't familiar. Uh, doesn't seem like the real good way to, but I do think that, um, clarifying and rectifying the redundancy of two separate laws that are, water resource districts are following right now, sixty-one sixteen and sixty-one twenty-one, I think it is. They're two different laws that deal with assessment drains and water resource district boards and, and how they're governing, how they go about that process. And so I think cleaning up that language into one would eliminate a lot of confusion throughout the state. Um, I don't think that, um, having a cohesive structure on how water resource districts operate would be a, probably a good thing, but I don't wanna take away from that local control either, because how they manage water in western Dakota is certainly different than how we manage it here in eastern Dakota. So, it's gonna be an, an interesting process moving forward and, uh, the next meeting will be the thirteenth of October for that. Um, um, following our, anyway, after our Association of Townies conference. Um, I'll be able to give the commissioners or association update at that time on progress and that, but. And, you know, a lot of different comments that, that took place after the, and, and a lot of it seemed to be. And, you know, a lot of different comments that, that took place after, and, and a lot of it seemed to be, you know, I don't know if it was throwing the water resource board under the bus, or it just difficulties working with them in other areas of the state, but I thought that, um, you know, I think having a good, open, honest discussion with water resource districts then has always been beneficial. So we'll have to, to see, you know, and I hate to see legislation drawn up because of a problem in one, one county or one individual has an issue and changing the entire legislation for everybody based on one person's problems. But, um, other than that, anything else? Auditor's office, again, this year, busy, you mean?
That's the work, again.
So that's the work, again, but the, the process is always fun, so, and.
The estimated tax statements go up?
Well, we. Yep. Uh, and that's kind of the reason for putting this deadline together today, is all the preliminary tax statements have to go up by the end of the month, and, and, uh, all done by legislative process on deadlines. And they changed that about four years ago, I think it was, wasn't it? And, um, the change for those deadlines there was two years ago. Two years ago. And those preliminary tax statements. And again, that's something that we have to remind our taxpayers of, is that it's preliminary. And not to come in and do your, your yellow sheet that you get at the end of, end of August versus part of September. That's an estimate, so. Anything else? I can't think of anything. Oh, um, state attorney on building and grounds, have we talked about the expansion up there? We need to get together with.
I haven't talked to Bo, so I won't visit with him.
Bo and Roger and district court, and see what we can come up with for some additional space up there, because it sounds like he's gonna need it.
Yeah, I haven't talked to Bo since last meeting.
I, I mentioned it to Roger, and he had something that, you know, we wanted to get on his radar and talk to him, so.
This looks kind of feasible, or?
Well, I, you know, um, there'd have to be some adjustments made and, and sacrifices from other entities, probably, but space and workload, uh, is gonna mandate you where we go with that, so. Right. Something we need to continue on if we wanna get that process rolling, if we, if Bo wants to hire some additional staff to start the beginning of the new, new budget, or if we're gonna get that taken care of, just on that.
I was just gonna add, you know, as we go into the pandemic, staff are really hot to have a hoteling space, and I've asked them to let me know when they realize it, so we could have a conversation about this corner, um, office space, and maybe there's a possibility of making another hallway there. I know there's some bits and talk about the H R person, and, and I don't know if that would be space that Bo would be interested in, but, um, if there's some way we can make a, a general hoteling space with printing capacity for, to have four state staff that um, actually want dedicated space, and I said, yeah, we don't have the space in the hotels for dedicated space, we're not to share it, and that wasn't, they didn't like that, but they, they have been willing to accept that, so. If we could, we'll get somehow getting printing space and a hoteling space for staff, that would maybe free up some space there, just adding that. I'd be willing to have conversations about that.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Um,
We need some more square footage.
Yo, let's discuss that a different year.
Yeah, we're kind of against it, we're supposed to pack ourselves a little more. I said, we need some more square footage, probably, what we need.
Yeah, I said, let's discuss that.
Yeah, and that's, that's, we're past that budget now, so, we'll talk about it later.
Right.
Can we just put another floor on top of the third floor?
Yeah, so we'll continue to press on, and next meeting date is the seventeenth, seventeenth. August seventeenth at, uh, Martin thirty. With that, no further announcements, meeting adjourned.
Let me get that, seriously. No one's coming, it's still here, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.